Thank you, Ms. Breton. I'd like to invite everybody to join me in a moment of silence, please. Thank you. All right. Any questions on the agenda this evening, members of the board? If there are not, any questions on the consent agenda this evening? Dr. Sullivan, is there anything on the consent agenda that we need to be aware of?
No, ma'am, nothing that... We have, of course, a lot more athletic coaches than normals. We're starting a new school year. But other than that, nothing of concern.
Good. We'll do our introduction on Thursday when we have a packed boardroom. And our visitors, of course. Okay, number eight.
Number eight, evaluation instrument for new director of schools, tab two.
Okay. Members of the board, have we had an opportunity? I know we've had a break. We've had some time since our last board meeting. Questions, comments on the evaluation instrument? Any recommendations? Okay. Dr. Sullivan, how would you like to move forward with the evaluation instrument as your part of this process?
The only portion that I had any type of concern about was, I think we mentioned it last time, the appendix that had the dozens upon dozens of, you know, install seven HVAC units. I think that came from our last portion of our strategic plan. From what I could tell, it was our strategic plan. And then every one of the goals was just added to that. So I would like for us to possibly look at removing that section and then updating that as we develop a new strategic plan in October. So outside of that, everything else, I'm perfectly agreeable to.
Okay. Mr. Reed will not be here with us this week. He's out of town. So since this is just a for-your-information conversation, I don't... If it's okay, we'll get with Mr. Reed and see if we can make those appropriate adjustments. And if any other board members have any concerns or want to make adjustments, we'll revisit this by the end of the month. Would that be acceptable?
That's all me.
Next item, number nine.
All right. So transportation list. We have before you the first priority list and then the second priority list pursuant to policy 3.405, bus contract award procedures, the new contractor list for the 22-23 school year. These two lists, first priority are regular bus drivers who have driven for two full years and second priority, those who currently own one or more contracts, are for approval and order to facilitate the awarding of new bus contracts on a timely basis for the beginning of the new school year and thereafter as contracts are turned into the Transportation Department through the year.
Thank you. Members of the board, questions, comments, concerns on this item? Okay. Is there another next item?
All right. Second is the 22-23 calendar modification. So this is just a proposal to move back to a two-hour abbreviated day instead of a full instructional day for the last day before winter break. This change would be for December 16th for the 22-23 school year. For payroll purposes, this day would count as a full day for all full-time classified and certified staff. And this has been a tradition in the past, that we have been on an abbreviated two-hour day. We tried that last year. We surveyed our principals. We had four principals that we surveyed out of the forty-something that responded that wanted a full day. Thirty-nine wanted a two-hour day, and then a couple had no preference. In talking with our attendance department, we also had more feedback last year on this than we did anything necessarily COVID-related. So that was shocking to hear as well.
That's insane.
I think you guys probably got some emails about this as well.
Quite a bit. Yes, we did. Okay. Thank you for that. Any questions, comments? I think this is a good... Appreciate that.
All right.
Okay, next item.
Number 11, special education, tab three. So this is a license agreement with Lexia. This agreement is to purchase reading intervention student licenses and training to address students with disabilities with deficits in reading. The district plans to purchase 750 student licenses with training and support. The cost should not exceed $65,400 to be paid with IDEA Part B Special Education Funds. And we currently utilize this already.
Thank you. Questions, comments, members of the board? Okay, next item.
All right. B, contractual agreement with Special Kids Incorporated. The contract with Special Kids Incorporated is for special education-related and nursing services. These services will provide speech, language, occupational therapy, physical therapy, and nursing services to Rutherford County School students and Special Kids facilities. Hourly rates for therapy are $82.50 per hour. Daily rates for nursing services are $185 per day. The total cost not to exceed $25,000 during the 22-23 school year and be paid from GP Special Education Funds. And this is a continuation as well.
Thank you. How many students do we service through this?
We had less than 10 last year. I'll find out an exact number that we know of right now based on enrollment, but it's going to fluctuate a little bit until we know our enrollment.
Thank you. Any questions, comments, members of the board?
Is this renewing of a contract that we need?
Yes.
It is, yes.
Okay. Next item.
All right. C, special education coach job description change. The Special Education Department is requesting to update the current job title and description. The position currently titled Special Education Liaison is recommended to be titled Special Education Coach in keeping with the coaching model of other central office supports provided to building-level teams. This was part of our... Sorry, part of our restructuring with our Special Education Department. Of course, we have a coordinator. We have three supervisors that we are looking at right now. The liaisons fall underneath that. But then that creates the confusion of what's liaison's actual role. And so we're looking at more of a coach role. So your supervisors have the supervisory aspect, and then the coaches help support the schools as they are needed. No funding changes or anything. That's strictly just a job title. And then we'll update the qualification or the description as well.
Thank you. Any questions, comments, members of the board? Okay, next item.
All right. Stellar Therapy Services Contract Renewal, tab four. So the Stellar Contract for the Nursing Medicaid Reimbursement Program in Rutherford County Schools is up for annual renewal. The TEN Care Billing Guidelines for School-Based Nursing Services have been revised and will become effective for... Are effective July 1st, 2022. Including these changes is a requirement that in order to bill for services, a nurse, practitioner, physician's assistant, or MD must provide clinical oversight of the school nurses providing these services for students. Stellar can provide these oversight services, but they have also offered a 5% decrease in their administrative fee from 20% to 15% if Rutherford County Schools is able to do so instead. Sarah Winters is in discussion with Dr. Amanda Gamble, the current medical director for RCS, to ensure that she is able to do so. And then below, we have medically necessary covered services in the IEP or IHP that are ordered by the primary care physician or treating provider may be reimbursed. Services that are reimbursable include the following: assessment and treatment of acute and chronic illnesses, blood glucose monitoring and testing, tracheotomy care and suctioning, colostomy care, catheterization, administration of oral medication per two, O2 saturation monitoring, pulmonary and myocardial disease, G2 feeding, wound care, nebulizer treatment, medication administration for medically fragile students as identified in IEP or IHP. Just as information, since February 2019, nursing services reimbursements have totaled $27,876, with $19,566 being the net proceeds for RCS. No services were billed in 21-22 due to COVID-19. That was a lot.
A lot of serious work that they provide. Any questions?
So question. Ms. Winters, hi. How are you doing? Hope you had a great fourth. I believe this was something that we had spoken about probably pre-COVID and that there's some money that we're leaving on the table because everyone's not turning in or filing for reimbursement. Correct. Where are we?
That's exactly what this is in regards to. The nurses send home a consent form for parents. Absolutely nothing comes from a parent. And it just is a permission form for us to bill Medicaid. And again, it's just like you said, it's money left on the table otherwise, so...
Is there anything that the board can do to try to...
I think it's...
Like more of that?
Awareness, parent awareness, that this helps us provide those services. The reimbursement of the money to our district will help us continue to employ nursing, increase our standard of care. And it's simply a knowledge, lack of knowledge and understanding of what that consent form means. And there's a lot of words on the pages and where we try to send out visual graphics that explain to people what their consent means. And just having a conversation with anybody who is interested in having that conversation does help.
Can we put something... I'm sorry. No, go ahead. Can we put something like that, just like our lunch paperwork? Can we put something like that out on the website? That way it's out there and maybe have some kind of ribbon or something saying, hey, here's this. Because, you know, anything that we can supplement on our nurses would be great.
I think that's a great idea. I have a question. If this is for our medically fragile students and we're specifically talking about our students with IEPs, is this not something that during an annual IEP meeting that we can have them sign the consent form at that time and then make notification?
That's a great idea.
It's normally a beginning of the school year, signing of medical authorization forms for the procedures, for the medications, for the tube fittings, for the catheterization. So those don't always line up with the IEP dates. It can be discussed and definitely just a trigger reminder. Are we getting reimbursement? Have we talked about reimbursement and...
Is it possible to have those parents? Because our families, and I've had students with IEPs, our families who have students on IEPs obviously are meeting and involved in their students' education. Is this not something that we could do early on, add an additional meeting? I mean, I know everybody's busy, but this seems like something we want to capture on the front end. So could we not get an additional IEP meeting to specifically address first-of-the-year documentation like this?
I don't want to be the person that asks the school members to do that. The pattern is now the nurses know who the students are for the most part, who have the procedures. And with anybody who has a medication that's signed in, they automatically... And here's a release form for a Medicaid reimbursement, whether you have TEN Care or private pay. And we just remove those names that are not relative to this reimbursement process. So at the beginning of the school year, every time a medication is signed in, anytime we receive doctor's orders for a procedure, we automatically send home that release consent form to a parent. The return is not very high, so...
I'd agree. I think using our nurses is probably the most efficient way because calling another IEP meeting would have a... In theory, I love that idea. In practice, at the very beginning of a school year, that's going to be a lot on our...
Monster.
A lot.
Yeah.
And maybe initially, the first year, it might be difficult. But if we made this a practice in our IEP meetings, then we would make sure that we had more people signed on with the form.
I think the more people who know about it and can trigger just that conversation, check with the nurse, have we got that form? Is this relevant to this student's IEP or IHP? Definitely.
Is this an electronic form that we can attach to their...
Yes.
The student's electronic account as well?
Yes.
It's a good idea because I'm... Obviously, I think everyone knows I have a critically ill son and I... Who served under an IEP. I didn't know it existed, so I think that's good.
Ms. Winters, do you think there are any barriers, ESL barriers?
Certainly. And we do have the forms. They're not our forms. They come from TEN Care and from Stellar specifically that are translated. But anytime there's that language difference, there is a communication issue. And the nurses are very sensitive to that. They reach out to their translators and try to have that conversation instead of, here's a form, so they can actually have a conversation with those parents, but...
Well, if you think of something that we can implement would help, let us know.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments on this item, members of the board? Next item.
All right. Number 13, Human Resources, tab five. And this is one of the recruitment options that we have talked about the previous meeting and discussed in email. So the Acro Service Corporation, the Human Resource Department would like to utilize the Recruiting Staffing Service awarded to Acro Service Corporation from the Omnia Contract number 16111. Acro will bill a participating public agency a permanent hire services fee equivalent to 16% of the starting annual salary, including guaranteed compensation of any kind but excluding variable compensation, performance-based bonuses, et cetera, at which the applicant recruited by Acro or its associates, vendors, is hired by the participating public agency. For purposes hereof, annual salary shall be defined as hourly rate times 2,080 or weekly pay rate times 52 or monthly rate times 12. We'll only be charged for their services if or when we hire any applicants that they send us. We are using this for harder staff areas, so we've done several or would utilize this for harder staff areas. We are now working with the State Department to be on their job board, the Blogspot Job Board, but this is another recruiting agency that we can use to hopefully be able to find teachers out there for us. So again, instead of using a third-party vendor, we're trying to do other things to recruit people or other ways.
Thank you. Questions, comments, members of the board? All right. Is there any? Next item.
All right. Next is the Accounting Supervisor Updated Job Description. So the Human Resource Department is requesting an updated job description for the accounting supervisor position to include revised language, including a bachelor's degree in accounting or finance with five progressive years of governmental accounting experience or an associate's degree with at least 20 years of governmental accounting experience with GCFM or CGFM or CCFO designation. And you will see what we're looking at there.
Very good. Thank you. A lot of letters.
There were a lot of letters. Letters I'm not used to saying either, so not together.
Questions, comments, members of the board?
20 years seems to be pretty excessive. Is that required or the standard or what?
Yes, I spoke with Mr. Bowdre and Mr. Runyon, and typically it's at a 20 to 25-year equivalency of the five years of governmental accounting. That's what they were able to find.
Almost ready to retire.
No.
Because that would basically take the place of the bachelor's degree, having associates in 20.
Any other questions or comments? Next item.
Next, we have the ESL EA Salary Schedule. So the ESL EA's current salary schedule is classified as a Level 2 under the description of General Educational Assistant. It's been requested to review the ESL Educational Assistant skill level considering the unique abilities and differences in duties they perform. And I think that goes right in line with number 15 as well. So if you don't mind, I'll go ahead and skip to 15 and read that and we do it all together.
Read it.
So 15, the review of the classified pay scale. So all of those together.
So we're looking at the pay scale.
Yes. And just a couple things. I know that is something that the board look at and I do as well. I want us to just be aware of anything that we are doing for any part of the salary scale. It has effects all the way through. So if we're looking at years of experience, then that's going to impact other just than the years of the people that we are looking at. I'd also like for us to look at it, and Mr. Runyon and I talked about this today, you know, we, I believe, give 10 years of experience for somebody that's coming from industry or has similar experience. That may be something we want to look at in the future of giving more than that. I think at one point, it was five, then it was 10. If a certified teacher comes in and they have 20 years of experience, we give them 20 years of experience. And if somebody has a similar type background, I feel like it would be something that may be worth us exploring to give them the years of experience to hopefully be able to attract high-quality candidates. Because that hurts us in this avenue right now.
I would like to look at us to do a pathway, a career pathway, just like we do our students. Because there's some that have been here forever. I mean, I know someone who's at Cedar Grove, and she's been probably there 20 years, and she's not making $20 yet. And that's a long time, and there's a lot of knowledge there. So I think, you know, us putting together some kind of pathway so we can boost their pay once they start on that. And we need to look at that.
And I definitely feel like something with our salary schedule that's classified needs to be addressed. My only concern right now is we just passed our budget, so anything we were doing would have to go back for a budget amendment. The other part I'd be interested in looking at as well, if this board was willing to do so, would be looking at a true salary study to see where we compare. I know the county has done a salary study. I'd like for us not just classified, but as an entire district to see where we are. I think the last one was done eight or nine years ago. We've changed a lot in eight or nine years, so...
I appreciate those comments, and I happen to agree. I think that there's absolutely a desire to increase salaries across the board. My concern about raising certain and not others, which I said when Mr. Bowdre presented us with additional hourly rate for, I think it was Skill Level 2 employees. While there were others in that same category with arguably the same recruiting issues, we only addressed one. So for me, I think that it would be responsible for this board to look at a salary study, particularly coming out of a budget season, to determine what the appropriate way to raise and compare us. And Dr. Anthony provided me with quite a bit of information, looking at salary schedules for classified employees that are in surrounding counties as well as comparative counties. I just have a problem with arbitrarily looking at, picking and choosing whom we want to address. I think there's a residual effect there, unintended consequences of that by not addressing all of them. So I do think a salary study would be absolutely appropriate in this scenario, but members of the board, be open to any...
Agreed.
Do we not already have a committee in play to analyze our salaries?
I think so.
We had a small internal committee that looked at that, but really what we were just looking at was the overall, how do we rank? I feel like it would be good for us to have an industry-standard-type salary study to see truly, you know, when somebody, that's what their job is, to tell us where we are, where comparable districts would be and industry would be. I know we won't ever compare wholeheartedly to industry, but our people have to have somewhat a living wage to where right now that is not necessarily the case. But we also have to be fiscally responsible in realizing if you were to... With the number of classified staff we have, let's just say around number of 2,500, if you increase 2,500 times just raising everybody's salary $2 an hour, times the hours they work, we're looking at millions of dollars, millions of dollars, and we're already 28 million into our fund balance for this year. And so I would just want us to be realistic and cautious about what are the best ways that we could possibly get some revenue back from other areas to be able to fund those positions the way they need to be.
Well, we've all gotten the email. The fact that we're addressing this and looking at this, I think, is really comforting and heartening to a lot of our... Not just our EAs, but our other classified employees because they have been begging us to do something really coming out of COVID. This is a great spot.
And I certainly do not think we can pick and choose. I think we have to look at the whole thing, all the way up, all the way down. We could not have made it the last two years without every single person from the top down. So let's make sure that we do this fairly and looking at it with a great deal of fiscal responsibility. And I think we can do that.
Yeah. Mr. Runyon and I are looking at that today. I looked at it to try to figure out, there's several different steps that something may be a 6.0, some's a 6.2, then there may be a 6.5. And we are trying to come up with some proportional formula to make those numbers work, and we couldn't necessarily come up with what the formula was. So I think a salary study would be wonderful. And our committee did look at this. We were advised to only pick a couple areas at one time, and so that is why it didn't make it as far as it probably should have.
But how can... Could you have a committee? I mean...
We could have a committee to review anything, of course. I would just like the overall numbers and all the investigation. I think it's better if it is from an outsider organization when you're talking about those type of things.
You're talking about hiring somebody to do this? Okay. I didn't quite get that.
Just like the county...
That's a good idea.
County General, I don't remember if they charge six, seven, eight, how much they charge, but they just went through a similar study.
Okay. So who does this kind of thing?
We could reach out to TSBA and determine if they have any industry partners that they could recommend or look at some of our surrounding communities that have recently done this and if they recommend anybody. And I'm sure we could do this expeditiously and then do an amendment to the...
Yeah. Yep.
I think that would be a...
I like that. Get some ideas from some other people. Because I have all kinds of ideas, but they don't mean they're right.
I just think we need to make sure we justify, you know, we're spending the taxpayer dollars. And if... I would love to do it yesterday. I would love to give all of our employees, especially in this season, a significant increase, but unfortunately, we have to make the responsible decision and have data to back those decisions. So I think a study would be best.
I think so, too. Good idea.
Any other comments, questions, members of the board on either of these items? Okay, next item.
All right. Next, we move to instruction, tab six. So A, the EPP Specialist to Rutherford Teach Now Coordinator. Due to the growth of our educator preparatory program and the requirements from TDEO, TDEO is an official licensed program, the request to transfer one EPP specialist position to the Rutherford Teach Now Coordinator. Currently, the duties of this position are split between our Career and Technical Education Coordinator and Rutherford Teach Now staff. This move will align the program as a partner with Rutherford County Schools, but also as a separate licensing entity. You'll see the total fiscal impact would be estimated at about $8,000. Basically, it moves somebody from a specialist index to a coordinator index. And then shout out to that as well. I think we had over 80 people attend our first session that we had on June 30th. And so that was great, just for the community to see how many people were interested in even seeing whether or not they could become an educator. That is much better interest than we have had, honestly.
We have. It was a low number last year. What was...
Oh, that number's probably three times our job fair number, wouldn't you say, that we had? I would have been happy with five or six people showing up to see that's five or six openings. And when I kept getting the texts, I can't believe we had this many people, we were going to make copies the second time to make sure we have enough of that. Now, I don't know how many are going to be viable when we look at their transcripts to see how many we can actually hire, but the fact that that much interest was out there for a first meeting...
That's encouraging.
Very encouraging.
Dr. Sullivan, it's a good time to plug that next week we have a second open house, July 11th at this building.
Thank you. I think it's great. It's... Did you see overwhelming... I saw a lot of questions from people. I've gotten questions on not sure if what we're doing is the best way to move forward. Have you...
Yeah. As far as using the Teach Now program to do that?
Some concerns.
Yes. So when we are looking at our curriculum, we are a state-approved EPP. That's where it comes from, just like a college. We are still, us and Knox County's looked at it a little bit. A couple other counties have looked at doing that. But we are a fully-approved, accredited licensing body, just like MTSU's College of Education would be. So if anybody questions the...
Third or fourth level now. I knew we were...
Yeah, this is ours. It's our fourth cohort, I believe.
Okay.
So we've expanded. It was just Career and Technical Education. Then we added Career, Technical Education, Math and Science. We've looked at adding Foreign Language and Humanities. The curriculum is not there yet, so instead of... We didn't feel comfortable writing our own. We wanted to have the SREB, the Southern Region of School Boards, be able to look at that with us. And so we decided to wait another year till they had a little bit more information. But it is doing very well. We are having a very high success rate. The attrition that we see is basically attrition we are seeing anywhere else out of education. It is not necessarily because of the program. I mean, and it only cost $1,000 compared to what the college tuition would cost.
I think, I just think that parents largely don't understand when they saw the Teach Now, there were a lot of questions about...
It's a great point.
Uh-oh, who's getting into classroom, right? Are we going to have licensed teachers? And so I think we need to maybe get that message out to our parents.
Great idea.
We can build confidence in...
You might explain how that works.
I will. Yeah. Good idea.
Yeah. Because these people have a college degree.
They absolutely do. They absolutely do.
It's not like they're walking in off the street and saying, ooh, I think I'm going to go to a classroom and I just really always wanted to teach my dogs how to read. It's not like that. They have a college degree, they have content knowledge, it's pedagogy that we teach them how to use, so.
Yep.
It's a great program, we just, I think, need to-
Good idea.
Wrap that up and deliver it a little bit better. Okay, any other questions or comments on this program? Or this item? Okay, next item.
All right, B, the adult high school lead teacher. So the adult high school lead teacher currently oversees operations of the Rutherford County Adult High School. This program is not connected with the former Rutherford County Adult Education Program. Curriculum instructions requesting to move this lead teacher, who's already serving 12 months, in a position to that of a specialist to oversee the adult high school program and to serve as the program specialist for the Rutherford County online program. This position was formerly a specialist position prior to the 18, 19 school year.
Thank you. Questions, comments, members of the board? Okay, next item.
All right, C is Rutherford County Proposed Admin Index. As part of the Salary Committee established during the 21, 22 school year, all admin indexes were increased with the exception of special school. Proposal to increase special schools administrative index to 1.25 from 1.20. This is the same rate of pay that the Rutherford County Virtual School was funded the past two years, and just to give, so we actually inadvertently decreased the Rutherford County Virtual Schools admin index from 1.25 to 1.20, and we left Holloway, Smyrna West, and Daniel McKee at 1.20 instead of bumping them up as well. So it was our Holloway, Smyrna West, Daniel McKee, and the Virtual School were the four schools. One of those was already on that index, the other three were the only ones that we did not increase.
So we're correcting air here?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. Questions, comments, members of the board? Next item.
All right, so D is a little different. So this is nepotism policy, per policy 1.108, and so I'm going to read the actual portion of the policy that pertains to us. So with the exception of substitute employees, members and immediate family members should not be assigned to the staff in the same school, plant, or facility unless some unusual circumstance exists which makes it in the best interest of the educational program as approved by the Director of Schools, Principals, Assistant Principals, or other supervisors are prohibited from having an immediate family member working under their direct supervision. The Director of Schools may recommend exceptions to this policy, however, all exceptions require prior approval of the Board of Education. So in the past, I think our practice has been just to email the school board chair to see, do you approve of this? I would like to add this to our consent agenda every time, so that the board's seeing who the recommendations are, especially as we are looking at trying to find staff members in any way that we possibly can. Sometimes connections are the best way to find staff members. So we have had three this time, and let me just tell you who they are real quick. We have Buchanan Elementary has Diane Campbell, who is a Sped EA applicant, who is in marriage related to Tammy Bowles, the cafeteria manager. We have Gail McLennahan, who is being recommended to CTE Digital Arts position, who is married to Stephen McLennahan, the Sped CDC teacher. And then we have Siegel High School has Kathy Moser recommended as an attendance secretary, and her son Kenneth Moser is a history teacher there. So those are the three recommendations that we have had from principals over the last two weeks, once we notified this, them of this change.
With no supervisory conflicts?
No supervisory conflicts, yes.
So my only question here would be, and I think it's great that this comes before the board and it can, is there ever a scenario where an immediate hiring is necessary, or putting it on the consent agenda would be adequate for our schools to fill those positions as necessary?
I wouldn't imagine that, because you would have a time lag of the hiring paperwork. And the only time that may need is if you had an immediate transfer, and those transfers would have to require school board, or would have to require both principals' approval after July 1st anyways, and so that would take time in and of itself. If I find that comes an issue, then we can look at another possibly modification of the policy in an emergency situation.
So this won't create any unnecessary delays in here? Okay.
I don't believe so.
Sounds good. Any other questions or comments, members of the board? Appreciate the transparency. Next item.
All right, E gets to our second recruiting portion. So assigning bonus incentive for hard-to-staff areas due to several factors, including salaries in neighboring districts on our north end schools, it's requested to approve a hard-to-staff incentive of $4,000 for certified staff at Laverne Middle and Laverne High School for the 22, 23 school year, as well as additional schools as approved by the board. This proposed hiring incentive will match the signing bonus stipulations already in place for the 22, 23 school year. This proposal will include all certified staff members, current and new, for the 22, 23 school year. Incentives earned with this initiative will be in addition to any other staffing incentives already approved. So that would include all staff members at the school. I did not feel like it was fair or right to teachers who are already at the building for them not to be included in that, and these funds would come from open position funds that we already have that aren't being utilized because the positions are open right now.
What do we expect the fiscal impact on this to be?
Probably, I'll go through and look at that by Thursday. I need to calculate that. Each school's going to be a little different, and we added in the additional schools as approved by the board. I'm concerned about Roy Waldron as well. I imagine some of our schools that are more on the north end, that's going to continue. Metro Nashville continued with another pay increase. We used to be able to get a lot of Metro Nashville teachers, but right now that is upfront, we're pretty good, but it is your teachers that have more experience to where we really, we struggle to match. And for a teacher to be working with a very similar demographic and right over the border, it is not a, it's not an enticing situation for us right now.
Your middle-career teachers?
Yep.
Hard to keep. Okay.
But I'll have a fiscal impact to look at that as well.
Appreciate it.
And then anytime we kept that open as approved by the board, if we got into a situation that we realized we were having a ton of turnover somewhere else, that we may need to address that.
But any additional schools would be brought before the-
Brought before the board to approve, yep.
Any other questions or comments on this item, members of the board? Okay, next item.
Next is Certica Case Assessment. So curriculum instructions requesting to use Certica Case Benchmark Assessment for the 22, 23 school year. RCS will administer the benchmark assessment in two windows following early spring. Additionally, Mastery Connect and Grade Cam are part of the assessment package for use by all RCS educators for data tracking and formative assessment creation. This will be the third year of utilizing the assessment. The total cost is $751,050, and as part of the general purpose budget for the 22, 23 school year. The increased in caution of 21, 22 school year is due to increased enrollment and the addition of first grade to this assessment platform.
Any questions or comments, members of the board? Next item.
All right, next, and we have Amy Baltimore. She is here with us as well, but I'm going to kind of, you don't have to come up here yet, Amy. Hold on just a second. So school counseling, the instruction department's requesting to purchase a district-wide curriculum for bullying prevention and child abuse prevention to comply with Tennessee Code Annotated 49-6-45032A and Public Chapter 623. The K5 curriculum's second step is provided by Committee for Children and is listed by TDOE as one of the suggested curricular choices. Material is age-appropriate, but delivered by school counselors as appropriate. I wanted to bring this up to your attention as well. It does have controversy around it in some other areas that's been used. Ms. Baltimore and I started working on this about three months ago, probably when she first started with us. If you utilize the curriculum in full detail, there have been places on the west coast, especially to where they have had controversy around teachers not feeling supported or not feeling like they needed to teach it for potential CRT, the buzz of social emotional learning. And so when we, Ms. Baltimore and I met, I said, one of the first things before I would bring this to the board is I wanted to make sure that we were vetting our curriculum that was being used, that we were looking at every lesson, we wanted to get our hands on it. Murfreesboro City currently uses it, and we are actually borrowing their curriculum, thank you, Murfreesboro City, currently borrowing their curriculum right now so that we could vet and choose the lessons. The other issues that this had in other districts is they were doing it district-wide, not necessarily with their school counselors. So you may have a general education teacher that just said, here is the bullying prevention we're doing, and this is what we're doing. This is truly with our school counselors, who we would train on which ones. Ms. Baltimore, you want to add, because I know you gave handouts as well to this. If you have not missed, Ms. Baltimore, she is our K5 School Counseling Supervisor, and we're blessed to have her.
Yes, thank you for the time. I know I handed you two large packets, but I wanted you to see the research, I wanted you to see the scope and sequence, I wanted you to see some examples of the lessons as well. So the first one, the Bullying Prevention Unit, this one would give us a message that would be consistent across the district and other districts nearby, Hamilton County, Shelby County, Kingsport City, Murfreesboro City, Knox County, Wilson County, Washington County, Sevier County, they're all using this. So we wanted to take a look at who was using it and what research has gone behind it. But the second piece that's kind of clipped together gives you the alignment to core and academic standards, and it gives you the scope and sequence that just lays out how it would grow and develop from kindergarten through fifth grade, and what students would be taught. I can show you a basic, very basic idea of the posters that come with it. This is the general idea of the lesson. Recognize bullying, so what is it? How do I get it stopped? How do I report it? How do I refuse it? And so what does that look like as far as that bystander power? Being a bystander and a helpful bystander, what can I do? What power, what voice does the child have in a bullying situation? So it would be taught by school counselors, it would not be taught by, you know, grade level teachers, and it can be rolled out in a variety of ways. It can be rolled out in an assembly, it can be rolled out in classroom guidance, it can be rolled out in video lessons, there are lots of different ways. And it also has, if you look at the very end of the packet, home links on every lesson that can be sent home in a PDF, multiple languages, it can be printed and sent home. There are online curricula that follows all of the actual materials, which come for each grade level in a big book like this with all the lessons and all the things needed to teach the entire curriculum, K through five. So it has a lot of resources, and it breaks everything down by grade so that you don't, currently what they're using is chunks, K through three, three through six, so it's not exactly developmentally appropriate where this is.
What are some of the ones we're not using? Like what are some units that they have that we are not using, as an example?
Units that-
Second Step has, that we're not using, because there are a lot of, when you Google Second Step, you are going to see a lot of things that are not connected to bullying, and we're using the bullying prevention.
Right, thank you. So the two that we're looking at, the two units that we're looking at are the Bullying Prevention Unit, and then the other folder you have is the Child Protection Unit. These are prevention curricula, these are not social emotional learning curriculum. They are teaching students to recognize, refuse, and report things that are unsafe, whether that's, you know, from outside at home or from inside the school. It's how, teaching children how to be assertive.
The online access would only be for these units?
Yes.
So our teachers will not accidentally step somewhere-
Nope.
-that we don't want them to be.
So each unit comes with a code, and so the school counselors will have this code, and it's directly connected to them, and then they can access it through that code. So it will be housed by the school counselors directly through that account, which we will tie back to a, an asset tag to be able to track it.
So the information that Dr. Sullivan just provided in the concerns that our community would have, we would not be having, that would not, we would not have access to any of that at all?
Correct, we're not looking at purchasing that portion of the program.
Okay, so there won't even be an opportunity for Ms. up there? Very good.
Shouldn't be. Our biggest thing we were doing is trying to find a unified approach to bullying, because that is a common complaint that we hear a lot, is that, you know, bullying is not addressed. What is bullying? Really trying to give students that realization of what it is and how do they fix that, and try to address it. So they're also being approved by the State Board of Education, or you can clearly look at it, it has Common Core straight on it, and that's approved by the State Board of Education, even though that's not allowed. And so we will go through and mark through, just like we were advised on anything, mark through those. Again, it's a national group, and so they're presenting things nationally, and that's the strange part that we have to play as a small state on a large scale in education.
I think parents are going to be excited about this, because that's one thing I know we all get phone calls about, K through 12. So we'll look for the six through 12 next.
Yep, we're looking at that, but again, when we're looking at these, we have to be very careful to make sure we're staying within what we need to be teaching and not stepping outside of that.
Right, and if you'll reference the scope and sequence, you can see how it builds.
Very good, I appreciate the work you've done on this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions or concerns, members? Mr. Young?
To take this a step further, we also have a bullying report that's due annually.
Correct.
We're supposed to report out on, when will we be reporting out on that report?
Do you know, Monica, exactly when the deadline is? I'll find when the deadline is, because I, it's been several months since I've seen it, so I know it'll be in this coming semester from the previous school year, but I don't know the exact month that it's due, but I can find out.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Okay, next item.
All right, H, ELA Assessment Alignment Project. So 30 selected K5 teachers and coaches, five per grade level do work to align and create assessments to be used with EL modules. The teachers participate in PD provided by the RCS Elementary ELA Specialist to ensure work keeps to the integrity of the curriculum and standards. Teachers will analyze standards, question stems, and question types to assist them in creating TN Ready-like assessments for all modules that provide teachers with aligned data to guide instruction to improve student achievement. Teachers will be paid a stipend of $50 per hour for a total of 18 hours, nine per semester for a total not to exceed $35,000. And just for your information, this is one of our things we look at is, we have to have an adopted curriculum, an adopted textbook, but more importantly than that, we're worried about how our students are accessing and learning standards. And so we weren't necessarily worried about the test that the vendor may give you to you, because that vendor's looking to see how their curriculum works. We're looking to see how the curriculum addresses standards, and that's where this comes in.
Any questions or comments, members of the board? Okay.
All right, next, hard-to-staff incentive for retirees. Due to the lack of applicants for certified positions, request to approve a hard-to-staff incentive for retirees of 5,000 for the 22, 23 school year. To qualify retirees, would need to teach at either Laverne High or Laverne Middle School, pending board approval of the prior item, or teach in an already established hard-to-staff certification area. Funds for hard-to-staff incentives for retirees would be first utilized with funding from open teaching positions. So this doesn't limit it just to Laverne Middle and Laverne High. If you have a retiree who is in a hard-to-staff area, so special education, English, ESL, math, science, that would work at any of our schools, but if they're in another area, then that would be applicable for Laverne Middle and Laverne High School as well.
What has the response been?
Not as high as we had hoped, but we have several. Dr. Anthony?
So we sent out to 450 retirees, and 18 responded back that they were interested, and four have actually followed through. Two of them already had contracts coming up, they'd done that in the past, and two others are interested.
So it's better than zero.
Better than zero.
Absolutely, so thank you board for that. Mr. Young, you guys wanted us to look at that, so thank you for having us look at, because it's teaching classrooms that may not have been filled otherwise.
Thank you, I have a question.
Yeah.
Is this 5,000 in addition to the four?
It is. And so we talked to a retiree.
I'm gone.
We've, Dr. Anthony and I-
Enjoyed being with you, but I am gone.
So what we tried to convey was that if you are a retiree, you could get 70% of your normal retired salary, so if somebody is still interested, this is your sales pitch again, you'd get 100,000, or 100,000, good lord, you'd get 100% of your current salary. Ms. Brad was gone right now, she was just leaving, she was gone. You'd get 100% of your current salary, you'd get a $4,000 for teaching at Laverne Middle or Laverne High, you'd get 5,000 for this, and you'd still get 70% of whatever retirement benefit you were receiving.
And also, they don't have to start like other districts. Other districts require them to start at zero years, and the bachelors were giving them their years of experience and their degree.
I can pay off my condo.
And so this is not just for Rutherford County retired teachers, it's for any retired teacher in Tennessee that is eligible, so.
Wow, we need to boost this.
Very aggressive-
We're trying.
-recruiting plan.
We're trying.
I'd like to see the fiscal note on that, too.
Yep, right now, it's not high at all.
Not with four, but, no, we do appreciate the knowledge of our retired teachers.
Yes.
Hope that we can get them back, and I appreciate you working on this.
Yeah.
It's a sticker shock when you add it all together, but-
It is.
Any questions or comments, members of the board, on this item? If there are none, we'll look at the next item.
All right, J, Extended Contract for High School Teachers. So this goes right along with the recruitment portion. So due to lack of certified applicants in several areas, in Tennessee Department of Education, stipulations required for teaching certain courses. This proposal establishes an extended contract for a current teacher to serve as the official teacher of record as described in the contract. So the educator would still be guaranteed a planning period after the conclusion, making it their extended contract of the day due to the requirements of Tennessee Code Annotated. So this would, instead of hiring a full-time teacher in that position, a teacher who this past year may have been covering that class anyways on multiple days, maybe Tuesdays and Thursdays, instead, they would cover it probably at least semester-long so that instead, they would cover it probably at least semester-long, so that we could have some consistency in the classroom. Their planning period, for say, would be at the end of the school day as their extended contract, so that way they were still going through with that. And this would give us that option. Tennessee Code Annotated does not give us an option to do waivers or permits for special education or any area that is an E.O.C. test. And so that really limits us to what we can do in some, in high schools.
An extended contract would?
Yes, because that's a certified teacher that is probably teaching, let's just say, integrated one, they're probably teaching other, three other classes of integrated. They could work in, there's some scheduling things we have to work through, but they could teach an additional fourth course, so instead of hiring that teacher, we're basically paying them what that teacher's rate would be during their planning period.
So we're compensating our teachers for what they did for free last year?
To some, yes.
Essentially.
Yep.
I appreciate you working on this, I wish we could have done this sooner. Any other questions or comments, members of the board, on this item? Okay, next item.
All right, C.T.E. Curriculum Team Leads, so Curriculum Instruction C.T.E. Department would like to allocate approximately fifteen thousand of Perkins twenty-two, twenty-three funds to support the C.T.E. Curriculum Team Leads for our high school C.T.E. career clusters. The purpose of the C.T.E. Curriculum Team Lead would be to help develop the instructional capacity of teachers, industry partners, and students within our county. The leads would be responsible for conducting in-person virtual meetings for career cluster PLCs and advisory council meetings. The allocations are, each participant receives a five hundred dollar stipend for conducting professional development sessions and the advisory council meetings through the PLC framework by C.T.E. career clusters. You'll see those allocations then, I don't think that's just repeated again. So you'll see, we have the career clusters, who the team lead is, and the school. This is, I believe, our at least second year of continuing with C.T.E. with our curriculum leads.
Very good, questions, comments, members of the board, on this item? Next item.
All right, Legal, Tab Seven, so Policy Adoption Second Readings. The below policies are recommended on the second and final reading. A, Policy 1.104, Memberships Strikes Language to Remove Membership from the Southern Region School Boards Association and the National School Boards Association and replaces with language that the district will be an affiliate member of any national associations, of which T.S.B.A. is a member. B, Policy 1.105, School Board Legislative Involvement Strikes Language to Remove Membership from N.S.B.A. C, Policy 1.204, Board Member Development Opportunities Strikes Language to Remove N.S.B.A. and replaces with language that district will be a member of other national school boards associations through T.S.B.A. D, Policy 1.407, School District Records Updates Name and Contact Information for Current Staff Attorney. Policy 2.200, Annual Operating Budget Adds Language to Comply With Tennessee Code Annotated forty-nine dash three dash three sixteen A two. F, Policy 2.802, Payroll Procedures Adds Language for Exceptions to No Advanced Payments of Salary to Reflect Current District Practice. G, Policy 2.805, Purchasing Adds Clarification to Purchasing and Bids. H, Policy 3.4031, Car Accidents on School Property, this is a new policy, Adds policy to clarify process when car accidents occur on school property. I, Policy 5.802, Qualifications and Duties of Director of Schools Adds Language to the State That Doctorate Degree is Preferred. J, Policy 6.202, Homeschool Adds Clarity for Participation of Homeschool Students, Participation in Fine Arts Programs. K, Policy 6.405, Medicines Adds Language to Allow Parent Guardians or the parents adult designated to deliver a student's medication to the principal.
Thank you. Questions, comments, members of the board? Okay, questions?
All right, Financial Matters, Tab Eight, so the State of Tennessee Retire Ready Program. So in September of two thousand eight, the Rutherford County Board of Education approved Valick A.I.G. as the only defined contribution retirement plan vendor that Rutherford County Schools would allow employees to have payroll reductions for. In June twenty-twenty-two, a comparison study of the Valick Plans versus the State of Tennessee Retire Ready Program, four oh-one K program, revealed that the state-defined contribution plan had dramatically lower average administrative fees for plan participants than the Valick Plans offered. It's now requested that the Rutherford County Board of Education recognize the State of Tennessee Retire Ready Program, four oh-one K and four fifty-seven B plans as the active defined contribution plan vendor for R.C.S. employees to receive ongoing contributions and, if applicable, exchange and transfer under the plan. Valick A.I.G. plans will remain as an R.C.S. vendor authorized only to receive, exchange, or transfers under the plan. This change will take effect August first, twenty twenty-two. I think that is actually possibly done by resolution, if I'm not mistaken.
Okay. Questions, comments, members of the board? Can this be done by just a vote of the board, or is there more to this?
I believe, yeah, I believe it's a resolution, and I'll get with Mr. Runyon, he couldn't be here today. We talked about this today, and my memory just was not.
Mr. Runyon was able to get that form completed this afternoon, and there's a meeting tomorrow at one, discuss it, but we're attaching it to the board packet. It's just a simple form that, that recognizes that they would be the sole group.
So in essence, we would be terminating our relationship with Valick A.I.G.?
It would be one of our thirteen, I guess,
Dormant?
dormant.
Is what you would call it? Okay, so we, they wouldn't be our primary, that would now be the state? Got it. Thank you for clarifying. Any other questions or comments, members of the board? Okay, thank you, next item.
All right, Nineteen, Land Acquisition Options, so this is just for discussion. So the board has previously recognized a need for land for new schools in the Blackman, Stewart's Creek, Smyrna, Laverne areas. This agenda item is being presented for the board to receive any updates from staff as to any prospective land that might be purchased, any recommendations for land acquisition and/or additional steps that can be undertaken to locate land that can be acquired in these rapidly growing areas. Mr. Lee?
Yes, I'm up. We'll do a quick recap. We have, over the last eighteen months to two years, we have made numerous requests for the public to bring us property. We've talked to numerous real estate agents, we've looked at numerous pieces of ground, we've looked at property that's over thirty-five acres and, and has some remnants of soil where we could do a septic system. We've met with local engineers, S.E.C., they've brought us a couple of pieces of property that we've looked at. We've looked at a piece at, at eight forty in Ocala, at the end of that, and does not seem to be going very far. We've looked on the other side of the road, Shores Lane, as Mr. Estes reminded me today, had plenty of caves on that piece of property, and he thought it, maybe had some uses for it, other than for a school system. We've looked at, the, there's two pieces of property on ninety-six. One of them is the property that the city owns, that piece of property's still available. Not in the way, manner in which we looked at it, we looked at purchasing the entire property. The city's now not interested in selling the wetlands. They would like to hang on to them, but the other portions of the property are still available. There's a piece of property just down the road forth, it's owned by a local developer, they're not interested in selling. We've looked at a couple of pieces over on Florence Road. Those are not available, those, in fact, those pieces are now being developed. There's a couple of pieces down two thirty-one, as we get close to Christiana Elementary, but that's not really in the area that we've been looking for, but it's in, it fit the criteria of what we were looking for. There's basically two pieces of property that are still viable for us in the area that we're looking at. One is the city, the property that the city owns, that we looked at before. And then there is, and I'm going to call it the property in the Blackman area, that we went and looked at. That property is still available. We do have, we still do have a verbal handshake agreement with Murfreesboro Water and Sewer to be able to access sewer from that property. That property is sized where we could build an elementary and a middle school if we chose to make an attempt to purchase it all. We have not, or I have not, looking for direction from the board, I have not approached that landowner to see if they would be interested in selling just half of it. I don't know where they would be, but with half of it, we could build either an elementary or a middle. With both, with all of it, we could build an elementary and a middle. So there's some conversation to be had if the board would still entertain the, the city property, is to maybe buy twenty-five to thirty acres from them, or attempt to, to put either an elementary or a middle school there, and put the other in the Blackman area. It is, the Blackman area is kind of close to a couple of our other elementary schools. But as we all know, all of that in Stewart's Creek, and all of that's growing faster than we can turn around. So, so it is viable for two schools, I'm not ruling it out. So after all of that, we're down to two pieces of property. If we're looking to get in the mix, and it's not getting any cheaper, I, I have had one conversation with the city of Murfreesboro, just to see if the land is still available, and it is. But they've kind of hem-hawed around that maybe now that there's been a new property appraisal, that our original offer may not be enough, they'd like to have it appraised again to see what the new appraisal is and see what the additional cost would be. Yes, ma'am?
Was it sixty-five acres that the, that were available at the Blackman property that we looked at?
It, it's, it's, it's seventy plus or minus.
Seventy plus or minus, okay.
Is it still at the same price?
Yes, ma'am. Price has not changed.
And we can get two schools on that?
Yes, ma'am.
Road frontage and everything's already there?
Yes, ma'am.
Why wouldn't we buy that part?
Why wouldn't we?
Yes.
I, I'm not saying that we wouldn't, I'm saying, I'm giving you, I'm giving, there's, there's basically two options.
I know you're giving us options.
There, there's two options. Put one school in the Blackman area and put one school on ninety-six, or put them both over on the Blackman property. I would not recommend putting both schools on the ninety-six property.
Right.
Because you only have one road. And I know everybody's going to hate that, I don't care what T.DOT does to it, we're going to end up with
It's going to be early enough.
Segal, we're going to have Segal and Blackman all over again, and Rockvale. You're going to have two schools trying to cross traffic right there together, and you're going to have, they're, their bales are going to be fifteen to twenty minutes apart, which elongates the time that it ties up the traffic. So I would recommend, once, if we decide to split, you would go one and one, but there would be nothing wrong with purchasing all of the Blackman property and enough over on ninety-six to do one and one and leave you expansion for the future. It just depends on what the board would like to see.
How much is left in the budget that the county commissioners gave us to buy land?
It's, it's, hold on just a second, and I can tell you.
Mr. Lee, on both properties, while you're looking that up, which grade band would you, are you envisioning per property?
Elementary and a middle.
Thank you.
If we went the split route and you wanted to buy two pieces, at this point, and I'm speaking kind of out on a limb, I would recommend an elementary on the ninety-six property and a middle school on the Blackman property, just because of the proximity to Blackman Elementary and to Brown's Chapel. Now, there's not to say that you couldn't put them both there, it's just going to make that
Yes.
It's going to make an odd-shaped zone. It's the only reason I say that.
Have there been any soil samples for the Blackman?
No, ma'am, we would have to do all that. Now, the property on ninety-six, we have done that. We know what we're getting into there. If we want to approach that owner, then that would be our next step, if, if the board wants to go there. Then we would put to, with Mr. Reed, put together, in agreement at X, you know, X acres and X dollars, and then we would have a contract contingent, which is similar to what we did with the city, contingent upon doing our due diligence and our soil samples and all that kind of stuff. And if all that checks out, then we have a deal. If it doesn't, we're able to walk, just like we did before.
Should we buy all the Blackman property and save some of it?
Yes, ma'am, you could. That's why I'm saying if you bought both, you could build an elementary there and a middle there, and you would have thirty-five to forty acres that we would sit on for future school, future expansion.
Would be good property to sell.
I think it'd be great property to sit on. From an, if I was an investment person, yes, I think it would be great.
Yeah. Well, it does have two road frontages, too.
Yes, ma'am. It's, it's open, it's being kind of slow today. It appears that they have funded, we have five point one seven million if nothing has changed.
And I can verify that, Brian and I can verify that.
So we've got sixty-five acres at Blackman. I'm eighty. You know, I'm not going to add it, I'm being
It's over five.
Five million, nine hundred and twenty-five dollars.
Thank you, you're good. What's, what's at the ninety-six?
I would recommend thirty acres, probably at around twenty-five.
I thought last was thirty.
It was a little less than that.
Twenty-eight, twenty-eight?
Twenty-eight. But that was for all of it. I don't know that, buying just a section, we knew we were buying some land that we weren't going to be able to do much with. This is all accessible, that's why I'm saying we'd have to, we would have to go back to them and whether we appraise them or we just make them an offer, or we stick with our original offer and, and see if they'll sell us twenty-five or thirty acres at that price. And then we have a decision to make.
Mr. Lee, one of the concerns that, well, the major concern of the ninety-six property was the wetlands and, and the flooding that would impact the neighboring subdivision. With the city not being interested in liquidating the wetlands at this point, does that change the position, the flooding consequence on the piece of land that's available?
No, we would still be responsible for maintaining the flow on the, on our portion of the property only, which is no different than we do on any other property that we buy now. It would be the same at Blackman, it's the same at Rocky Fork, it's the same at Plainview. No matter which property we purchase, we're going to be held to the same T-deck requirements.
A detention pond would be required?
Yes, ma'am, everything we do.
Anything we do, we cannot hurt what's already there. I mean, it'll have to be either helped or better.
It, it would be, it's got to be the same or better, but we cannot be a detriment to it at all, that is correct. And that's the same on every property that we buy now.
Well, do the, do the engineering studies support being able to accomplish that?
Yes, they do.
We're still looking at water coming from the Burgess property, and there's nothing that we can do with that until it gets to our property.
They're, they're required to take care of their property, just like we're required to take care of ours. So any water flow issues that is associated with their property, they cannot make it any worse, they have to address those as well. By just purchasing a section instead of it all, it would shift us further to the west and take us further away from the area that is the low part, where we would be better suited to build a detention pond and be able to address our property, limiting any assessments. But we, we would be held by T-deck to meet their standards, yes.
The Burgess property, excuse me, the Burgess property is being developed, though, right across the street, so they're going to have to address that
Yes.
water runoff anyway.
Yes, same restrictions that we would have to meet.
But the thing with that is, and you know, you're in real estate, they're going to have asphalt and concrete, so there's no ground for that water to go in, so it's going to
And they have, they have to address that. That's, that's the reason some of our detention ponds are so big. It's because of our property and also because of the runoff and the type of soil that's there.
You mean, you mean Lake Rocky Fork over there?
You mean the pond?
Yeah, Lake Rocky Fork is what we call them.
Lake Rocky.
Lake Rocky Fork.
It's not as bad, because now that it's been stabilized, we were able to lower it, so it is at a much lower level. But yes.
I would like to suggest that we proceed with looking at that Blackman property and do what we have to do to check the soil and whatever else it is that you have to do to see how feasible the Blackman property would be for us, would that suit the board?
We better jump on it.
That's, I think we better, I'm really afraid if we don't jump on it, we're not going to get that property. And we need that property.
All right, so here's, here's what we're going to do Thursday night.
Okay.
We will redraft this into a motion.
Okay.
You're going to authorize engineering and construction, I just want to make sure I get right what you all want.
Okay.
Going to authorize industry, engineering and construction to work with Jeff Reed
Okay.
to engage the property owner in Blackman at his asking price for the entire property.
Yes.
To establish a contract price in same contract we did with the city so that we can go do our due diligence, and if we find that it doesn't work for us, we can walk away at no cost.
Absolutely.
If we find that it does do what we want, then we will enter into a contract to purchase.
Yes. It suits everybody else.
The previous city property, we have already done a lot of that due diligence.
We've already done every bit of that, we know exactly what we're getting into. So if we decided we wanted to, all we would need to do there is reach out to the city to see what portion they would be in, or what's the minimum they would sell, and what's, and what's the price.
I'd like to see us do that, too.
And I'll be glad to do that for you as well.
See what we want.
On the ninety-six property, though, Mr. Lee, will we need to note in, in the motion that we'll need the reappraisal, or will we just go back to the negotiating table?
That'll be up to y'all to decide, do we want to offer the same? Or do we, are we willing to go through the reappraisal process at a cost of six, eight thousand dollars? Which is, we're going to go through that. that'll cost us $6,800, which is, we'll go through that on the Blackman property too.
Based on the line item that you read out, we don't have enough for both.
I don't think so either.
No, it would have.
That was going to be my, my next question.
Be one or the other.
Because if we look at Blackman, seriously look at Blackman, we're going to be short about a million dollars. Do we have any SRF funds?
Not that could be utilized for that.
Because I know this, this Blackman, correct me if I'm wrong, because it's, was that March that we went and visited? It was 80 an acre and then they wanted to be made whole for the house that was on there.
That is correct.
I also think we need to get with Lisa Nolan, we just went through this budgetary process and as we looked at those additions, I sat in on meetings where this money was part of a conversation and we need to make sure that we have not used this money or reallocated it for something else.
I think what they've done, until they borrow the money, they've borrowed against this for us to pay for the design fees with the intent is that when they borrow the money for the additions, they put the money back.
Okay, okay.
That's what they've done. Now, we've done that in the past as well. That's not an unusual thing. They'll borrow for money, because this money's already been borrowed. It's sitting out there. So they use that to pay for the design fees, but we're going to be a little bit of time going through this process if they could shift the money the other way and this money would be there.
I think it's worth it, yeah.
The other thing we need to talk with, we probably need to get with Doug, because there's, there's monies that they've moved to future middle school, future elementary projects that's sitting out there. And I'll be honest, I don't know what those numbers are, that can be
Brought back.
If approved, brought back for, because these are elementary and middle projects. So all of that's a process. We just need to go through the process.
But I think we need to get started.
Yes, ma'am.
So if you'll help us get started, we would appreciate it.
We will have a motion
Thank you.
In this position for you for Thursday night.
We appreciate it.
Honestly, I would like, since I came on the board two years ago, I don't know all the properties that we have bought and the land that we're sitting on. Maybe perhaps there's land we're sitting on that we don't really need and we can sell and that would add to
I've got a, I've got a portfolio that I did probably two or three years ago that shows every school that we have and what's available at each site.
Mr. Lee, would you be, would you please provide that?
I'll be glad to send that back out as well.
Electronically?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I can send that electronic and you can look at it.
Okay.
Dr. Sullivan, would you please look into the funding component?
Yeah, absolutely.
So we know
Yeah, you'll have that by Thursday for sure.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you for the information. Any other questions or comments on this item, members of the board? Okay. Next.
All right, insurance update?
The county did not have the June meeting, but we will have the July meeting and our three benefit specialists started today, so we have our full team before now.
Very good. Directors update?
And you will see if you're walking around our central office at any point, we're in the middle of renovating yet again, because we are just about out of space. That, we've been out of space, but we continually, so we are now down to three conference rooms and this room in our central office. Everything else is gone. Our HR conference room is now turned into four offices. To get to HR, you don't have to kind of go back through a corner. So we're utilizing every space that we possibly can, but we're, we're running out, just like our schools are running out of space, so.
That leads, we were going to, glad we talked. This building was built in 99 for a district half this size. And we have carved, we've done what we've asked our schools to do. We have carved this building up to the point that the air doesn't work. I mean, it works, but it doesn't work like it was supposed to. We've even added over the last couple of years additional rooftop units. I'm sorry, folks, we're finished. And I don't mean that in a derogatory manner, but we've carved this building up to the point that it's almost not functionable and it does not flow. We threw out a few years back, a 25,000 square foot two-story addition on the back corner of this property. And we threw out then the bottom floor being all office space and the top floor being a PD training facility type place, which would open up where the PD is now for the support services that I've got, sitting on top of each other. It would give a little space for the support services to expand over there. And we could do a real nice flow path to where we determine who goes out there from here. We would basically go through a system of moving them out when that building is finished and then you remodel a section, we play leapfrog. And then we completely redo, we need to have an architect, space planner come back other than myself and look at this building as a whole and what we are and where we're going and what are, because what we are today is you all, I'm not telling you all anything you don't know, but where we needed one person to do a job before, now we've got 15 or 20 or 25, the sped department. If you'd have told us in 99 what it looks like, they would have said you were crazy. So that's my spill into, I think we're at the point is we need to get the architects working and we need to be looking at sometime in the spring, bringing this back to begin to ask, make that an ask.
I know that's a hesitation because our schools are so needed, but where we're struggling now is so we've moved everybody just about out of our central office, that we can move out of our central office. And when we send them to schools, now the schools are, I have nowhere for you to place them. Can they work in their car and that?
Yeah.
That's a, that's a challenge in and of itself. So just like everyone else, that's something that we'll look at, but I will absolutely balance that with what our needs of our school are, because our schools have to be first. I know Blackman and Stewart's Creek Elementary, along with our additions at our high schools, are a huge need. Laverne continues to grow. I know, and talking with Dr. Hatchett and Trey, and I talked about this today as well, we need to do some, some renovation type things over there potentially. He emailed me a little while ago that even with ceiling tiles, they were backordered for, how long was that?
Floor tiles.
Yeah, floor tiles. Yeah, that was it.
Nobody has any knowledge of age, maybe, that's before our, we're, we're, we're going to, we'll figure out what we're going to do.
Like Laverne Middle.
Yep, so.
So this space here, do we have any height requirements? Could we do three levels and do a top parking garage or something like that to maximize our
There is a possibility that we could do a special exception to go three stories. The parking would probably be on the bottom, just because it's the most efficient way to do it and they make the top two floors space. But we've got, I'd rather see us pay for ground to provide parking spaces that we need versus spending the money for a parking garage. We're not going to get our bank for a buck. And right now, we still have grass over here on the other side that we can pave. And if we moved, you know, a few more folks across the street or made that larger, then we would have enough space. I can get us enough blacktop.
What about the two buildings next?
Yeah, what's going on over here?
They're building another warehouse space. I don't know who that developer is or anything. It's just like the one around the corner that nobody knew was for sale.
Yeah, that sold in April and I, yeah, it's going to be a diesel car now.
Mr. Lee, I have a question and I do appreciate you bringing this to us, but very few dollars, we have students not in classrooms and I'm going to ask a tough question. With teleworking and us just passing a policy or working on a policy for that, is it possible for us to, to move in a direction of reassessing, and maybe this is, Dr. Sullivan, excuse me, my question, reassessing if our, if any of our employees can telework or work remotely? That seems to be an industry, a lot of industries are moving to that direction. I know it's not typical for education, I understood 100%, but specifically central office staff, if that could give us a little bit of time, we're just dealing, I mean, we just talked about which, which property do we buy? And so I know it's a need, we've talked about it before, and I don't mean to put our staff last, I just, we've got to make the best possible decisions.
Kids have to come first.
Right. So is that, can we look at that first to determine whether
We look at that.
We can do teleworking and if that would solve some of our immediate needs?
We can. No problem.
Okay.
A couple other quick things to talk about. I already gave you the update on Rutherford Teach Now, so we have that second one again July 11th, so that'll be here in our boardroom. Communication wise, just a couple other things we are going to be looking at the next couple of weeks. James and I have talked, it's been a month or so since then, after every board meeting, just doing a quick summary for our parents up here, the items that were discussed, just doing a quick video of other, a couple other directors and do that as well, but that just sends information to our parents to know here are the things that were discussed, here are the things that were decided upon. So we're going to look at doing that in the future. We're also going to start a couple series on just our overall code of conduct with our parents and our teachers and our students. That hasn't been the focus the last two years, the code of conduct. Our code of conduct is very lengthy. It is extremely lengthy. And so we are going to look at that to see, just here are, so that parents know, one, here are the things that are in our code of conduct. That doesn't mean that schools do things all the same, but here are the options available to the schools and to the principals and to the administrators, and then here's your procedure if you don't agree with those type of things going on, just being upfront of here's where to find that information and here are the things that can happen. And just from the very beginning of the school year, telling people, you know, we have to get back to a respectful nature and respectful tone in our school buildings to our employees. That was the number one find we were, thing we were finding was that it wasn't pay, it wasn't other different reasons people were leaving the profession, it was because of just an overall lack of appreciation and lack of respect. And so that was both societal, but even more in the classroom setting. And in our students' defense, you know, students are going to do what is the focus and the focus hasn't necessarily been structure and order. It's been safety and instructional things going in and out of the classroom because of COVID. So just refocusing on those. The last thing I do feel like I, I don't speak for the board, I speak for just leading this county and supporting our teachers. I do just have to, to make the comment that I wholeheartedly disagree with the comments that were made, that were publicized about public education, about colleges of education and about our teachers. If it wasn't for teachers in this county, I wouldn't be where I am today. And our teachers go in day in and day out in very trying conditions, doing the best to change students' lives. And so know that we're always appreciative of our educators and all of our staff members, but specifically that.
Yes.
I feel like that needed to be addressed.
Thank you.
Had to be very careful because we still have that, of course, coming up on July 18th. So I want to take that off everybody, I'll handle that and then we can move on. Yep. That's all I have.
Thank you.
I do have a follow-up there. What can we do to show more appreciation toward our teachers? What are some steps we can do like now?
Yeah, so a couple of things that we can look at. One, I think just addressing the overall behavior is good. Another aspect that I saw Williamson County just looked at, and I don't know that this is a this-year thing, they have looked at making a lot of those meetings that are during school, our PLC, our professional learning or planning meetings, they actually have early release or late release, depending on their calendar and they've go through a, they just added their different grade bands and do things a little different. I don't think we need to jump into that right now. Our parents, our community would need to have a lot of discussion about how we do that. Toluoma City does something different or similar, but they don't have wide transportation. I think that is the biggest thing that we can do is using our daily schedule to benefit our teachers so that they can get the most benefit of the time that they have in their building, focusing on the items they need to, so that they, when their time of the day is up, there's always going to be other things they have to do, but we can minimize that amount of time they're having to spend afterwards. I think that has to be one of our focus areas, because as much as we want to pay as much as we can, that's not necessarily something we can always control, but we can control how we use our time.
As far as code of conduct training, do we have that set up formally for each school?
We do. We're going over, that's going to be one of our main focus areas on July 19th. We have our K-12 principal meeting here and then that should follow up along with us sending that information to parents as well.
Very good. Any other questions for Dr. Sullivan and his director's update? Thank you. Appreciate the information and all the work you're doing. Ms. Maxwell, Tennessee Legislature.
I will have something as well as federal, I'll have something federal Thursday as well.
Very good. Okay.
All right, guys, I'd just like for you guys to be informed, so the state will release initial TCAP results tomorrow. They are very initial. We had a whopping 12 PowerPoint slides of the release of what we received, so it is a very generic snapshot of what performance looked like across the district for each subject and then at specific grade levels. And that is all that we have seen so far. It does not include growth, it doesn't include the individual school-specific information yet, and so it is a very generic snapshot, which is wanted you to be aware that that should come out, I believe, at 5:00 in the morning tomorrow is when the first release comes out, so.
Thank you for that.
And I'll share as soon as I can, I'll share that information of how we performed.
Appreciate that. General discussion, any general discussion items this evening?
I'll just say, I made a challenge on my LinkedIn account yesterday about the comments that were made about our teachers for those who have not been in our school system to get beyond the dog and pony show that we see, you know, when the governor comes out and when different people come through our school system to come and guest lecture or guest teach in our classes. That would help with two things. Number one, it would help with our teacher shortage. Number two, it would give people a look at what's going on in the classroom, it would give our students a glimpse of politics on the local level and not the state level. So I just challenge anybody to come out, whoever wants to give a day of service, I'll match a day of service.
Okay. Any other comments, general discussion items? Members of the board, I wanted to make you aware that I had spoken with Mr. Reed, unfortunately, he won't be here this week as I've already stated, but he has been working with and heard from the consultant. They are presently collecting data and we expect an update in the next couple of weeks. So hopefully by the end of July, we'll have some form of an update, but they're in the data collecting process right now. So wanted to keep you aware of that. And is there any other general discussion items? If there are none, thank you to our SRS for being here. We always appreciate you and our staff. We'll be adjourned.